All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Glendale City Council Workshop Session of November 9, 2021. This meeting is called to order. Attendance roll call is not necessary. Everybody is in attendance. Ms. Bauer, if you take note. Also, would you introduce our one and only item?
Redistricting discussion. All right. Sorry, Mayor and Council. At the workshop on October 12th, council reached consensus on draft A map and directed the city's consultant, NDC, to develop a second version of the map with minor changes. NDC has developed draft A2 map, which attempts to incorporate all of the minor changes council suggested at the October 12th workshop. Staff is requesting that council make any adjustments to the suggested boundaries that are necessary and reach consensus on a final map for adoption at the November 23rd voting meeting. And with that, I will turn it over to Ivy.
Good afternoon. It's nice to see everybody. Of the redistricting process, we've been through this before, so I'll just touch on some things very quickly. Today, we are looking forward to council's deliberation with regards to the map options. And we are looking to the near-term future for adoption of a map. The statutory deadline is February 2nd of next year. So however it goes, it goes.
Except, excuse me, the county has requested that we have the map to them by December 15.
Yes. The redistricting rules and the goals. Of course, there's the federal statutes of equal population and Federal Voting Rights Act. And of course, no racial gerrymandering. We've been through this a number of times. There are also Arizona statutes. Again, they repeat nearly equal population and contiguous territory in as compact a form as possible. There's traditional redistricting principles, communities of interest or neighborhoods. We seek to have districts compact and contiguous as much as possible. We utilize visible geographic boundaries as much as possible. We look for continuity in office, planned future growth, of which we have some numbers here from the planning department, which I'll show you in a few moments. We look to minimize voters shifted to different election areas. And of course, to try to preserve the core of existing election areas. All districts have grown in population during the last decade, with Choya District growing the least amount at almost 3% and Cactus District increasing in its population by 13.6%. Yucca has also had a significant increase at 13.5%. If you can make out the numbers, which I cannot do on my screen, these are numbers that we have received from your planning department. Your planning department. Let me pull up my spreadsheet, please.
He's looking. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Are these final plat numbers? Is that what these?
There are approved numbers and there are numbers that are still in review.
Okay. But is my understanding that we consider final plat numbers? Is that, am I mistaken there?
Traditionally, we do look for properties that have been approved. And planning presented the data to us with approved or under review.
Okay, but approved and final plat are two different things. So, and it's my understanding that it's final plat. Am I mistaken?
You know, I'm sorry, Councilwoman. I don't know that offhand.
Our city attorney just arrived. He may know the answer.
Very good.
Do you know? Yeah, come to the microphone.
Okay. Do you want me to ask it again? Or did you hear me? Did you hear me, Mr. Mada?
Mayor and council members, yes, I believe the question was, is this only final plats? It's definitely inclusive of all final plats, but it might also include other projects which do not need a plat. For example, it could be, have been in the process for multifamily. And it could be at varying stages. So sometimes you can get an entitlement through the planning process, but they aren't ready to go through the building permit. And we went back to that period just prior to the 2020 census. So it's got us some aspects of the year 2019. If it wasn't the planning process, there's no way it'll ever have any occupancy during the census period. So we would make an assumption that between that late 2019 period and about now, it's gone through several more iterations of planning reviews and building safety-related issues. So it's a combination. It's definitely captured all the final plats, because that will be the exact number of lots. But then there's so much else that's also adding up to it. And there are quite a few multifamily in this calculation.
Okay, thank you.
Just quickly, I had done some totals earlier. And in Barrow District, there were 173 approved single-family dwellings to date. In the Cactus District, there are 56 multifamily dwellings that have been approved. In Choya, there are 418 multifamily units that have been approved. Alcatillo has eight multifamily units that have been approved. Suaro has 182 multifamily units. And Yucca has 384 approved multifamily units.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Are those individual units? Or, that number seems low for Yucca, doesn't it?
That's multifamily, she said.
But individual multifamily units? Because the number for me would be individual.
It would be dwelling. So individual family dwellings.
Which doesn't make sense for Yucca.
Yeah, I'm confused. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think this kind of illustrates the difficulty of trying to shoot at a future target. That maybe we should just go with the numbers of the census. Because I know, even though there's 173 that you just mentioned, single-family dwellings online in the Barrow District, I'm pretty confident, and maybe Mr. Mada was pointing to this in his comments, that I had, there are subdivisions in the Barrow District which weren't complete. They'd had final plat approval prior to the census, but had not, that's plat approval. That doesn't mean they're built. But then since, so they wouldn't have shown up in final plat approvals after the census, because they were before the census. But the people didn't move in to those neighborhoods until after the census, perhaps. And I'm not sure that those numbers are captured. And that this map here in the page five of the slideshow also shows another subdivision, I think an apartment complex. So, and two other, at least partial subdivisions are showing up in there. So the number for Barrow is a lot higher than the 173. That 173 only represents, I would guess, the subdivision going in at the former Glen Lakes Golf Course. But there's quite a bit of other development that's happened just in my district, or our district, the one I share with my residents. So I just, we need to, you know, I think it's kind of difficult to aim at some squishy number in the future.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Is mine on? Yeah. I think the purpose of this demonstrates exactly what I've been saying all along. The numbers fluctuate. Choya, for example, I assume that 533 number is an increase in population. Is that correct?
Choya has had approved 418 multifamily units.
That isn't what I'm asking. What does the 533 for Choya represent?
Doug, are you here?
Yes, yes, thank you. Sorry to be late. I just connected back in. Are you looking at the growth chart?
Yes.
Or the development chart?
Yes.
I believe it's residential units, if I understand.
Okay, so that 533 represents residential units. Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman. The number 533?
Yes. You have that in red on your expected growth areas map on slide five. Choya, 533. Suaro, 944. Barrow, 859. Cactus, 342. Alcatillo, 410. Yucca, 7,848. I assume those are residential units? I want clarification of what-
I understand. I understand.
I want clarification of what those numbers represent. Are they units or are they population?
They would be units.
Okay. So you could theoretically, the national average is 2.3 persons per unit. So you could multiply all those numbers by 2.3. But I think the purpose of this map goes to exactly what I have been saying all along, is that there is an explosion of growth in Yucca District. 7,848 new units. That's seven times the highest number of any other district. And the reason why I point this out is, I expect these units to be completed within the next year or two, which dilutes the vote of everyone in the Yucca District, because it will be overpopulated in comparison to the other five districts, or six districts, five districts, whatever. But it will be overpopulated in comparison to all the rest of them. And when you have that extreme overpopulation, you have a dilution of the voting strength of individuals within various districts. And I think that that is what the value of this map means to me, at least. And I realize, and I'm disappointed, that it cannot happen. But there is absolutely no way to compensate for those 7,848 units without going way over a 10% deviation. I recognize that, and I understand that. But I also am dismayed that due to circumstances beyond no one's control, Yucca's, the people, the voters in the Yucca District will have their votes diluted almost immediately. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still a little bit confused on the numbers. You gave a number of multifamily in Yucca of 300, I think, is what you said?
418.
418?
Let me pull that up, please.
I thought that was Choya.
Oh, you're saying Yucca.
Yeah, it was threesome thing.
In Yucca, from multifamily units that have been approved, there were 384.
Okay, so I'm still trying to understand how you can get to 7,000, is that 7848 in Yucca with only 300, less than 400 of those being multifamily? That means there's 6,400 single-family homes? And that just, that doesn't seem possible.
If I might follow up-
I'm gonna ask everybody, I'm gonna ask everybody to go through their chair. Let this get out of control.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
What we don't think about are things like Allen Ranches, all the way out west. I think they've got a couple hundred units there, and I know there are a couple more. But I agree with you. I know there's more multifamily. I can see them being built right now. As Sero is another one, for instance. Then there are two over in Zanhero. So I know there are more multifamily units than what are being given to us.
Yeah. If I may, Mayor?
Okay, I'm trying to figure who's saying that. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Doug Johnson on the-
Go ahead, sure.
I think, as Councilmember Clark said, you know, these numbers are really big. And there's no way that we can accommodate them within the allowable margin of the law. So for the purposes of this debate, it doesn't really matter how many multifamily units there are, or exactly how many single-family units there are. We know there's a lot of growth in Yucca coming, more than any other districts. And so the question is, is how comfortable are we pushing that maximum deviation or getting close to that deviation? And what good, does it do any good to have, you know, 200 fewer people? So I would suggest, for purposes of this topic, we're not really worried about X number of multifamily, X number of single-family. We just know there's a lot coming to Yucca. And we can just act based on that.
Mr. Oldama?
Thank you, Mayor. Don't know if I'm hearing what, I think I'm hearing, but it's relevant, but it's irrelevant. Those in-progress developments didn't occur in the point in time of the census count. It didn't happen. So we're counting what they provided us. I'm not willing to change that. I still agree that the original Plan A with no changes brought forth by the consultants, by the professionals, is still the right plan. I get that the Yucca District's growing. It's going to be the district that grows. But what's in the chute now wasn't in the point-of-time count. And I attest that that's not what we should be doing. So we need to take into consideration the point in time. And that's draft A, the original. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, all along, the last time we discussed it was in favor of draft A. I even like the title, minimal changes. It keeps the district as tightly as possible. It meets all the requirements. And that's the one I'm going to support. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I could support draft A if Independence Heights were included in the Yucca District, as has been requested by residents who live in that area. And that is the only problem that I have with draft A, is that it does not keep Independence Heights within the Yucca District as requested by citizens. So if there could be some kind of minimal change to accommodate that issue, I could probably support draft A with that change.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I can support that. If you look at draft A, and I'm disappointed to lose a very significant historic piece in my district to the Barrow District. But I know that it'll be in good hands if this is the route we go. I'm talking about Sands Estates. I do not want to lose Sands Estates. I don't want to lose any of my district. In fact, I'll take more. But if I lose Sands Estate and lose Independence Heights, that's not a win for the Alcatillo District. It absolutely is not. I think it's actually unfair to suggest that. Councilmember Clark mentioned the last meeting that we would be disenfranchising those folks. I believe there were three. And with all due respect, I thank you for writing your letters. I have many people who have asked me to not allow Sands Estates to go. I would be disenfranchising them. So is it five of my constituents or three of yours? I still attest that Plan A is the correct one, and I'm going to lose Sands Estates. That's huge. It's significant to me. Councilmember Turner will come all the way across northern to Orangewood, from Grand Avenue to 51st. That's significant loss to me. But like I said, I know it'll be in good hands. And gaining Independence Heights will make that move equal. And so I couldn't support that. I am going to continue to support the original draft A, as is brought by the consultant.
Thank you, Mayor. I've never been through this process before, but I'm looking at the rules and goals. And I don't see anywhere on here where it says individual request by residents. So I don't know, and I understand residents don't want to move, but it's impossible to do redistricting without moving people. And I think, I mean, the map A does say minimum, it really is the most minimal changes of any of the maps. And I, you know, I feel bad for people that are getting moved into other districts. But I mean, that is what we have to do. It's a federal requirement that we redistrict. So, because we're a charter city. So I just, I mean, is that something that is to be considered? If somebody says, I want to stay in the district I'm in? Or, I mean, based on these rules, I don't see that's something that is to be considered.
Yes, Councilwoman. We would consider it under the category of communities of interest, that people, that some of the residents voiced that this was their neighborhood, that they had similar interests, and that they would like to be where they would like to be or kept together.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank the consultant for their work on getting this process completed. But I do believe there was a misunderstanding from our last meeting to today. When we approved kind of, we approved map A, basically, with possible some minor tweaks. And I don't think it was, there were a lot of things that were discussed during that meeting. And I think what you did is you took everybody's comments before we approved map A and tried to incorporate them into map A. And that was not the intent. That was not my intent, nor some of the other council members, I don't think. So what I did, and I was expecting a conversation with the consultants about this. I was a little disappointed that no one reached out to me to say, well, what kind of minor tweaks are you talking about? Because I specifically asked that, and yet I saw none. Nobody ever contacted me. And I was disappointed that I didn't get to have that opportunity. So now we're having this conversation where that could have been already resolved. So I reached out to council members on my north independently, which our attorney said was okay for me to do. And Councilmember Tomachoff and I agreed that map A on our boundaries was good. We want to keep it that way. On the southern boundary, you did provide a map A2, which again, this only affects my district and Councilmember Turner's district. One of the concerns that we heard from residents was they didn't want to divide the Copperwood neighborhoods. And so we agreed that map A2, which would basically put the dividing line at 55th Avenue. Both of these changes make very minimal changes to my district, and even Councilmember Turner's, and Councilmember Tomachoff's. They're the most minimal by taking map A with this tweak between myself, my district, Suaro, and the Barrow District. And that's what we had proposed to do, is make that minor tweak, leave the Choya District and my district map A, and change map between Suaro and the Barrow District, move it to map A2. And I believe Councilmember Turner and I are both in agreement, and Councilmember Chomachoff would probably agree with that as well. And I'll let them speak to that.
I do agree with that. Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question, though, on the Independence Heights issue. Is that, is draft map A dividing a neighborhood? I don't, based on the current district boundaries, I don't see that it's dividing a neighborhood. And when you said communities of interest neighborhoods don't want to be divided, I don't see that draft A is dividing that neighborhood. It's basically an established boundary. So maybe I'm not understanding it. But it's my understanding that they just don't want to be moved into another district. It's not necessarily dividing another neighborhood. Whoever can answer that?
I think it does not. And Councilmember, what it does actually, it gives back the Alcatillo District what they lost in 2010 census. It's an appropriate move. It doesn't break anybody up. Most of those residents that are there have been in the Alcatillo District before. So I hope that helps. It does not divide it in half or anything like that, so.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I find it amazing that we're willing to accommodate the Copperwood neighborhood, where one or two residents voiced their concern. But yet, when three residents of Independence Heights voiced their concern, they are dismissed. That is, I just throw that out there as a little bit of irony. And I do recognize that this does directly relate to communities of interest. And this community of interest, Independence Heights, wishes to stay within the Yucca District. And that was their request.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. If I may, I agree. I agree that we can't be making decisions based on areas. That is why we allowed and we asked the professionals to design a plan. And while you met with us, you brought Plan A back. I don't know why we don't just take that one now. It doesn't get influenced by anybody here, other than the separate meetings we had individually. Plan A does that. And I think the last meeting we had was, the consensus was draft A, minimal changes, very minimal changes. I don't know that minimal changes were made. It may sound like they may be a little larger than that. But draft A, original, with no changes, as is, I think meets all of our needs.
Mayor, I beg to differ. I don't think it meets everyone's needs. Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
If I might, thank you. You're right. Draft A, as originally proposed, doesn't, I don't feel meets the best needs of the residents of my district. The, I do support the A2 boundary between the Suaro and the Barrow Districts, which basically has the line come straight down 55th Avenue between Cactus and Peoria. The east side continues to move into the Suaro District, just like about half of it did last go around. The rest of it then moves in this go-round. And the west side, which includes the Copperwood District, remains with the Barrow District. I think that's a good change in, between the two drafts. We'd like to remind everybody, we asked for public input. We told the public, you can give us input online. You can send us emails. You can send a letter to the clerk. You can attend any of the three public meetings we had. We asked for public- We asked for public input. It doesn't make sense, and it's really detrimental, to ask for public input and then ignore it. So I'm pleased that the Copperwood residents that expressed that they wanted to remain intact in a district, they're doing that. I think that that's an excellent accommodation. And while I respect the hard work and the expertise of consultants, they themselves will admit they don't know our neighborhoods as well as we do, and as well as the residents within the neighborhoods do. So that's why our input as their representatives and their direct input is important to consider. My understanding from the last workshop was that we were going to use Draft A as the basis with adjustments to the boundary between Suaro and Barrow and Ocatillo and Yucca. And I'm satisfied with the adjustment between Suaro and Barrow. And I, I'm disappointed that the Independence Heights neighborhood, which as I understand it, and it hasn't, the input hasn't been completely clear, but as I understand it, Independence Heights is currently in the Yucca district, having been in Ocatillo 10 years ago. And their request to not flip back into a district, if there's a way to honor it, I'd like to honor it. I don't think it's necessarily good for public involvement and people understanding the community to every 10 years be flipping a neighborhood from one side to the other just for the math. Okay? If there's a really good reason for doing it, fine, but not just for the math. And that's why I don't support flipping Manastee, the Manastee Ranch development, from one district to another this go-round, simply for the math, because they were, they were in Ocatillo 10 years ago, they got moved to Suaro, and now the, or to Cactus, and now the proposal is to move them to Barrow. I don't think that that helps us build better communities and more connectivity between the population and their elected officials. Thank you.
All right. So let me offer a suggestion here for everybody, and I'll probably not get any support on this, but we've got to move on. So if we start off with what we all agree to, Draft A, and then start up with Choya, Choya, and Suaro, if there's an agreement between those two councilmembers on those border changes, that we accept it all. And then we move on to Suaro to Barrow. If there's an agreement between those two councilmembers, we accept it. If not, then we just leave it as Draft A. Same thing with Cactus to Suaro, Cactus to Barrow, Ocatillo, like that.
Okay.
Does that sound okay to everybody?
It's fine with me.
Does that sound fine? If there's not an agreement, then we're going to stick with A, with the changes that the two councilmembers both agree to that have border in districts. Does that sound fair?
Say that again.
Okay.
Just that left.
Starting off with A. If Councilmember from Choya and Councilmember from Suaro agree on the changes in the B.
A2.
A2, I'm sorry. Then that would be, that would be the new lines.
Good.
And then those, that councilmember from Choya is out. Okay? And then we go Suaro to Barrow. If those two agree on the new changes, then we would accept that. And then, basically, then it would be Cactus and Suaro have to agree, Barrow and Cactus have to agree, Barrow and Ocatillo have to agree, and then Yucca and Ocatillo have to agree. If they agree, we take it. If they don't agree, then it stays the way A is.
Originally.
On those lines between those districts. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So let's start off with Choya and Suaro. Do you both agree on?
Map A.
Map A?
As is.
No, not A2, Map A.
Map A.
Map A as is?
Yes.
Map A.
Okay, so.
Original Map A.
Okay, so that's, well, we're getting somewhere, right?
Yep, we're good.
Okay. Suaro to Barrow. Do you agree with Map A?
We would like Map A2.
A2.
A2. Okay. So bordering that is Cactus. Does Cactus have an issue with A2 on that border between Cactus and Suaro and Barrow?
No.
You have no issues?
No.
So A2 would be fine on that line for you, correct?
Correct.
With all three of you? Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, this is way easier. Okay, Ocatillo to Barrow. Do you agree on A?
I can live with Map A, original.
Okay. But not with A2, or, what the hell is that called?
Yeah, it's A2.
Map A2. You do not agree with Map A2 lines, correct?
It's really the same for the Ocatillo, so I could live with it.
So you have no problem with A2 on that? Okay. And then what?
The same, Mayor.
Okay.
With Cactus.
Okay, so now we have Ocatillo to Cactus. Is there any issues there on Map A?
No.
Okay. All we have left is Yucca and Ocatillo.
Oh, Mayor, sorry, it's Doug Johnson again. There is a change in A2 on the Barrow-Cactus line.
Okay, so we're, again, we're starting off with Draft A.
Oh, there is.
On Draft A, you do not agree, is that correct? On Yucca and Ocatillo?
Draft A, I can live the way it is.
You like it the way it is, and Councilmember Clark, you do not agree with Map A?
I do not. I would prefer Map A2.
Okay. So we do not have an agreement on that, so therefore it would stay as A. Correct?
No. I'm not.
Okay, because that's all we got left. If we can't get the two of you to agree on that, then as a council, we have to make a decision if it's A or A2.
It's not right.
Just for that border.
Just for that one border. Because everything else has been agreed to.
Well, no. Choya, Suaro, Map A, Suaro and Barrow, Map A2, Barrow and Cactus, Map A2. So it's not just one map that this council is approving, it's a combination of the two maps.
Yeah, we're talking about the lines.
And I'm talking about the lines. I prefer A2, the boundary between Ocatillo and Yucca.
And I do understand that, but if the other councilmember doesn't agree to that, then it goes back to the original.
Then I would like to see if there could be some minimal change done by the consultant to accommodate that, because otherwise you're ignoring a community of interest.
Mayor.
Yes.
Now, I just want to clarify on Cactus. What I agree with is Draft A when, and not Draft A2 on Cactus.
That's the border between Barrow and Cactus.
Yeah, and I agree with, yeah, as long as mine stays the same, and it's not really affected at the top part, what Councilmember Melnar want to do. But you call it an A2, but no Cactus. I want it to stay as Draft A, which takes care of what your concern was and Councilmember Melnar. But mine stays.
Which border was, which border? I'm lost.
It's Draft A.
Which border?
Barrow and Cactus.
Oh, okay, okay.
Who wants to stay with A?
Okay.
There's no Map A.
Okay. So is there an agreement between Barrow and Cactus on Draft A lines, between those two districts? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So again, we're back to Yucca and Ocatillo. So let's ask you this, Councilmember Clark. What exact lines are you looking for change?
Map A2 does exactly what I asked. If you look at Map A2, it keeps Independence Heights. No, it doesn't. I take that back. I had Independence Heights in the wrong place. Neither of these maps keeps Independence Heights within the Yucca district. And I don't understand why the consultant did that, when the consultant knew that there had been emails from Independence Heights residents requesting that they remain within the Yucca district. And yet, on both Map A and A2, that request has been ignored. And yet, you talk about preserving communities of interest, and you didn't do it on your map. At this point, I'm in the minority. I know that the majority of council is going to support Map A, but I still feel it important to register publicly my objection and the reason for my objection.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Yeah, hold on. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Clark, can you give me the boundaries for Independence Heights? Because I'm not sure I know exactly where it is.
Yeah, I have a map here. Let me find it. If someone needs to ask.
I can answer that. So Maryland to Ocatillo, 71st to 75th. That's the square.
That's correct. That's what I have on my map. It's directly across from Independence High School.
And that, taking that away is 4,000 residents from me, and then taking an additional 4,000 at Sands Estates, right here.
Well, it's not taking it away from you in that it hadn't been yours within your district for the past 10 years. So it's not taking it away. It is, in fact, adding it to your district.
Okay. Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as I see it, the difference on the boundary between Ocatillo and Yucca, the difference between Map A and Map A2 is the addition of the, that one arm at the top there, just south and northern. Is that a square mile? So A2 actually moves some population from Yucca to Ocatillo, which addresses the concern of, should we under-populate Yucca to accommodate future growth? So A2 has that going for it. But both of those maps have, as I understand it, have Independence Heights, which is currently in Yucca. Both of those drafts have it in Ocatillo. And now, the initial map was at council direction, produced by the consultant prior to any public input. So it's not their fault. And so now we have the question of after public input, having heard from some residents in Independence Heights that they prefer to remain in the district they're currently in, rather than flipping back to a district that they were in before. And again, I really would like to urge us to not consider the individuals who hold the office representing those right now. We weren't here when this was, most of us weren't here when this was done last time. We probably won't be here when this is done next time. You know, it's not about our offices. It's about what's best for the neighbors that live there and their neighborhoods, and that's what we should be trying to look at, so.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, it looks, you know, in the, in the public comments, there were three individuals from the Yucca district that asked to stay in the Yucca district. I have one that's concerned about losing Sands Estates. So I mean, what is it, one to two, three to one? Mr. Casadis, if you don't mind mentioning his name, he doesn't want to leave the district, and I don't want to lose him, but this is a decision we have to make. So what is it, your three are more important than my one? I had a significant amount of people who just didn't want to send emails, but they verbally said, "I don't want to leave." And so, again, I'm okay with Map A, and I'm willing to make, have consensus called on it. And Map 2, I'm not, I'm not totally out of that one, but I'd leave that to the Barrow and to the Cactus district.
Councilmember Aldama, so I want to understand, you're asking for consensus on Draft A with the agreed-upon changes between the district councilmembers?
Yeah, so, so just to be clear, I'm 100% okay with Map A, the original, as is. I'm also okay with Map A2 if Vice Mayor and the Barrow district can make up that corner there on the northeast. So I hope that helps.
Mayor, I have a question.
Okay, well, I'm still trying to clarify. So my question is what they've already agreed to as we sat here at the DIAS. There has been some agreements between councilmembers.
So I would ask, then did that square over on the north, I think it's Manastee Ranch, back to the Cactus district? Then yeah, I'm fine with Map A2, with the changes made for the Cactus district.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so what it would be is Draft A, Cactus district would stay just exactly how Draft A drew it up.
So that doesn't change anybody's districts? What, is everybody saying that?
No, no.
Just that boundary.
Just the Barrow and Suaro boundary, and they like A2.
Right. Mayor, I have a question.
Okay, so we'll get to you in a second. So Barrow and Suaro district, there is an agreement between the councilmembers?
Correct.
On A2?
To do the boundaries of A2.
Okay. Between those two districts?
Between those two districts.
Okay. And Choya and Suaro is fine?
On Map A.
On A.
On A. Barrow and Suaro is fine on Map A?
Two.
A2.
No, they want A.
Barrow and Suaro.
A.
A.
No, A2, I'm sorry.
No, Barrow and Suaro is A2, Barrow and Cactus is A.
All right, well, that's clear as mud. Okay, what is your question?
So my question is regarding the boundary between Yucca and Ocatillo. The difference between Map A and Map A2 is that it moves one, as I see it, a quarter square mile up at the corner of 67th, no, it's 71st and Northern, 71st to 75th there. It moves that square mile out of Yucca and into Ocatillo. My question is, is the councilmember from Ocatillo okay with that?
Yeah.
So you're okay with Map A2 for the boundary between Yucca and Ocatillo?
I'm okay with it.
What I was saying is that A2 affects the Cactus district because they lose Manastee Ranch. So I said, then those two councilmembers need to make that decision. It's really the significant change is losing Manastee Ranch to the Cactus district.
All right, so let's go back to what Councilmember Turner just said. So that little quarter square mile north of Myrtle, west of 71st Avenue, you're okay if that moves into your district?
That's this one here you're referring to? Yes, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Councilmember Clark, are you okay with that quarter square mile moving into Ocatillo?
I have no problem with that.
Okay. So we have an agreement on that? Okay. So the part between Cactus and Barrow, Manastee, where are you guys at on that?
Draft A.
Draft A.
Okay, and you both agree to that?
Yes.
Okay, so all we have left now is basically?
Original.
Yucca and Ocatillo agreeing on the remainder. Correct?
So it sounds like you have maybe consensus for original Map A, as is? Nope?
Not as is, with the change that we've talked about.
Yeah.
Right.
Mayor, I have a question. How do we know what these numbers are based on the discussion that we're having right now? Don't we need to look at, and I don't know, the consultant, are you able to make these? We didn't get a tool where we could move anything using Draft A. So I, I mean, we're looking to come to a consensus, but we don't know what the numbers are. So how do we, how do we do that?
That would be you.
You're on mute, Doug.
Doug's talking, maybe. So I've been drawing these into a map as you've been discussing them. So we have the numbers. Essentially, it's just a matter of taking the different stat sheets from A and A2 and district by district. But yes, you are still population balanced, and the numbers still work.
It's close enough, we're not going to blow anything up?
Correct.
Okay, so is there a consensus on everything talked about?
Mayor. So I, I'm very clear now. I wasn't clear. Thank you, Councilmember Melnar. So Draft A, bring in this corner, this arm here into the district? Yes, I'm good. And that's what was?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm asking for consensus on everything we talked about.
Don't.
Yes?
It needs to be restated.
Mayor, point of order.
What?
Can you restate for the record?
I don't think I could.
And that becomes a challenge. We want to make sure we're clear on it. So, or can somebody restate it for the record so that everybody, that the public is clear on what these changes?
Okay, so let me, let me take a stab at this and see if we're right. There is an agreement on Map A2 between Choya and Suaro, those lines?
No.
No. Okay, so there is an agreement on Map A. Draft A, minimal changes, Choya to Suaro. Yes?
Correct.
Okay. Then we move down to Suaro to Okay, then we move down to Saguaro to Barrow. That would be A?
A2.
A2.
A2. Okay. We good as gold so far?
Yes.
Okay. Then we go from Cactus to Saguaro. That's A?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, then we go from Cactus to Barrow. That's also A?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, then we go Cactus to Ocatillo. That's also A.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, now we have, did we already do Barrow and Ocatillo?
No.
Okay, okay, so that would be A2, because that's adding that little corner in.
No, that comes from Yucca.
That comes from Yucca and Ocatillo.
A and A2 are the same.
Right.
Between Barrow and Ocatillo.
Okay, and then, and then the only thing with Yucca and Ocatillo is adding in that little quarter.
75th Avenue.
There was an agreement on that, but there was an agreement between the two councilmembers on the other, but it looks like we have consensus to accept it as stated.
Yes.
Is that correct?
It's correct.
Yes?
75th Avenue, Northern.
Okay.
He wants this little.
All right. What else do you need from us?
I don't believe things, sir.
Okay, so, and I want to make a quick statement. I, I've heard several people say that they don't, people don't want to leave their district. The houses are not moving, and I can say this because I, in my legislative district, in my congressional district, I have been involved with, incorporated, incorporated's not the right word. My district was part of Sun City, and it was a very heavily Republican district, where when it was redistricted, then actually was a 300, I'm sorry, 180-degree opposite, where not even close to Sun City, where it became a very heavily Democratic district. And right now, in my legislative district, it looks like it's even condensed more, where it's even a heavier Democratic district. In my congressional district, now it looks like I want to be in Yuma. So, and my house isn't moving. I'm not overly happy with the legislative process, but it is what it is. People keep moving, we keep building, things keep changing. My neighborhood isn't going to change. My representation could change, but it's up to me as a citizen, as a voter, if I don't have the representation I'm looking for, then try to get them, so.
Mayor?
I just ask all of you, is, you know, your people aren't moving, that doesn't mean that they lose representation, it's just, it's going to be different representation.
Mayor, I want to throw one final comment out there.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. This is attachment A of the public comments that was presented in our packet. Ocatillo District had one comment. Saguaro had one comment. Barrow had three. Out of those three comments, one person asked to remain, that copperwood remain intact. Choya had one comment. Yucca had three comments. All three of those people asked that Independence Heights remain. All I'm pointing out is that you have exceeded to the request from every, request, with the exception of Independence Heights. And I think that is not right and not fair. I told you I could support draft map A if Independence Heights remained in the Yucca District. Apparently, no one is willing to do that, so I am not in consensus with the rest of council on this. Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I will just say this, and this is premature, but when we get to a vote and we vote on the consensus today, I'll prematurely say to Ms. Maestas, Ms. Delbeck, and Ms. Tuxey of the Yucca District, when the district turns into the Ocatillo District, I promise you, and I'm looking right at you, I will be the best representative that I can be for you and the Ocatillo District as I have for every other constituent. You are in good hands. When you're with the Ocatillo District, I promise to continue to be, you have you in good hands. So that, to the three of you, I value your comments. This is a process. I will be your Ocatillo District, and you'll be proud. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I just have one thing, because I actually did make a map, and I just want to, for the residents who are not going to be happy for councilmember Clark also, is that down in that part of the city, the population is so dense that it gets really complicated, even moving boundaries a few blocks to make the numbers work. So it's all, I mean, it really is tough to make the numbers work down in that part because there's so much more dense population in that area where Saguaro and Choya, it was relatively easy. Some of the boundaries are much easier to make changes because it didn't shift the population by 3,000 or 4,000 people, which, when you get down into that part of the city, that's what happens. So I don't, hope people don't feel disenfranchised, but that we are doing our best to make the districts as equal as possible, and trying not to separate neighborhoods and to move people into a different election cycle. So just so people understand, it did get more complicated the further south and southwest sort of you got in the city to move boundaries, because literally moving over a couple streets could change a population by a couple thousand residents. So that's what the problem was in trying to accommodate this. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. City manager report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Just three items in my update. As you are aware, we have a, an agreement with ASM Global, who manages the Gila River Arena, where we enter into a profit-sharing arrangement once base costs are concluded. I'm pleased to let you know that even though we've come off of, obviously, a very challenging last year and a half in the arena business, that we did, notified by ASM that our share of the distribution of profit-sharing for the arena will be $1,136,912, and we have received that check. Again, this is, I think, is good news in light of the pandemic and all the things that have happened there. So I know, speaking on your behalf, we will make sure ASM knows how much we appreciate their partnership and the work they've done. Those of you who've recently been to Westgate, if you have been noticing, there's been work going on outside the main arena with the static billboards that are in place, and they're replacing these in a partnership with Westgate and ASM to replace all of the static displays to high-definition digital boards. They've got two of them operational, the rest of them will be turned on here in the next week, week and a half, and it's going to add another layer of excitement and kind of pizzazz to the area. But it's also just an indication of the continued investment by Yam Properties into the Westgate area. Finally, November is Employee Gratitude Month here for the city of Glendale, and our employee teams have been working really hard to create ways to really, to help recognize and thank our amazing employees. And I think we can use that word amazing when you think again that we did not miss a beat coming out of, you know, just a really, a once-in-a-career type of pandemic that all of us had to face on leadership, that they did a super job of keeping our core services moving forward. You know, I also want to thank the council. I know you all did some videos that we're, that we're driving out through our website, thanking our employees, so we, I know that's very appreciated by our employees. But again, if you get a chance, you pass employees through the hall, again, extending your gratitude towards them is, would be fantastic. And then I just personally want to thank our employees. They just, every day, do an amazing job. We saw two weeks ago, when we were talking about our bulk hauling and our solid waste team, just a single example of how good those employees are and what a great job they do. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Nothing today, thank you.
Hey, council items, special interest agenda allows for the council to have such things. Each council will have the opportunity to indicate topics that it'd like to have discussed by this council at a future workshop. Mr. Aldama?
None at this time, Mayor.
Councilmember Clark?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Melnor?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachon?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, and the only thing I'm going to throw in is we do have a Christmas parade coming up, but coming up before that is Veterans Day at the Brown Library. Invitations, one out for anybody that would like to attend that. It's not going to be a massive event because of, again, the COVID issues, we're trying to still be careful, but there is room if people like to be, be there at ceremony. It starts at 8 o'clock AM, Brown Library, two days, so day and a half from now, you're certainly more than welcome. And then with that, it's my understanding, Sue, you can correct me, but I think what our city manager was referring to is the opportunity for all our council to do videos in between now and our meeting tonight. Is that correct?
Between 3:30 and 5:30, step out.
There you go.